That's new.
Consent.
Yes. Sam didn't care about my consent for over a year.
It's 2021, we ask for permission.
Okay, you're recording.
Okay, thanks Heather. This is the Planning Commission work session for the city of Cottonwood Heights for this Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021. Thank you for joining us. We're going to start with reading our determination for why we're doing this electronically. This is pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074. The Chair of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission hereby determines that conducting any meeting of the Planning Commission within 30 days after this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. And if you were listening in earlier, we were just chatting about that and it sounds like the city's getting closer to having more of these meetings live and in person, which will be nice to see faces. So with that said, just to give you an idea, in our work meeting, what we do is review the items that will be on our business meeting agenda, which starts right after the work meeting typically at 6 o'clock is when we're scheduled. And that this isn't time for planning commissioners to talk about these things. So we don't take public comment during this work meeting. This is our chance to talk through items together. If we have any questions for any of those that are on this, we'll let you know.
Commission Chair Coates, if I might add, tonight's business session, I think it's going to start at 6:30 just because we have a longer work session for sleds.
Yes, thank you for saying that, Sam. That's right. We've reserved some extra time for the sensitive lands. So with that said, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Sam and Andy and Mike to go ahead and present, starting with slides, it looks like.
I'll give just a really quick introduction. We're going to try to split the work session in half, spend the next 40 minutes or so on sensitive lands. And we have Adam Ginsberg, who's our senior engineering staff member with us to talk a little bit more about that, or he was with us. Oh, there he is. So Andy and Adam are going to go over that for the first half and then we'll, we'll spend the second half of the meeting, go over the agenda items and that should take us right to the end of 6:30.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. I'll just jump right in. Give me a moment to pull up the slides that we've prepared. Great. Okay, can everyone see? Looks like it's up. Okay. As Mike said, we're here to give another update. We don't have the full revised language prepared yet for the sensitive lands ordinance, but as we did last month, we just want to give an update to let you know a little bit about how progress is coming and what sort of items are being considered and a couple of the changes that we've got underway right now. Of course, we'll continue and we hope to have another in-depth discussion prepared for you at the next meeting. But to give a little bit of an overview of what's happened so far, this has actually been a kind of long-running project, starting all the way back in 2019 with some preliminary research from other staff. And then throughout the year, last year, we've had some different versions of red lines and comments on the ordinance from our geology consultant GeoStrata. And then where we're at now is just working on the city staff recommendations and then preparing for public hearings this summer and fall with planning commission and city council. To go over a few things, so Shane caught something that is going to be included in the update, which is that we had a definition of a DRC or Development Review Committee. The DRC is a group of city staff that meets weekly with potential developers and property owners in the city who have projects with questions. There were two conflicting definitions of this committee in the ordinance, one in the sensitive lands chapter, and then another in the general definitions of the zoning ordinance. And so one of the changes that's being proposed is to remove the DRC definition from the sensitive lands ordinance so that we don't have conflicting definitions. The one in the sensitive lands had this description of the DRC as being approved by the city council, which is not the way that it's been done recently. So we just wanted to clean that up. There are a few other cleanup items and changes that have been recommended by staff that we think are are good recommendations to include in a future update. One is the applicability section. So the, the current ordinance says that the sensitive lands requirements are applicable to any area that's designated as a sensitive lands district on the city's maps or as otherwise determined by the director. We've had some issues recently with projects where they might not be in that overlay and we'll show some maps here in a minute. But they are in areas that are affected by certain hazards. And so in order to clarify that, we're recommending a change to the text of the ordinance that says these are applicable to all lands in Cottonwood Heights where a hazard has been identified or suspected. And that if the reports are required, they will have to record a notice that runs with the land. And there used to be the ability of the director, the planning director, to remove areas from the sensitive lands designation. That will no longer be included in the, in the new staff, in the new text. We don't want staff to have the ability to remove property from this designation. Another item is, as noted before, that a notice will be required for any that have identified hazards. But also if there's a plat that is recorded, so for a subdivision. And this is pretty similar to what we do now, but again, just clarifying that if there are geologic hazard reports, that those have to be specifically noted on the plat that's recorded and any related setbacks or other notes related to the reports will have to be recorded on the plat. Another major correction that will be a part of this project is the water-related hazards. So we have a separate chapter in the city code, Chapter 17, just storm drainage and flood control development. That includes obviously storm drain and flood control provisions. It also has the stormwater pollution permit information, other water-related regulations. And so we felt that it was more appropriate when we do these updates for watershed protections, riparian protections, groundwater and source protection zones to move those to Chapter 17 where it makes a little bit more sense. And then again, we'll be adding a little bit of additional language for the shallow groundwater areas. Include standards for development and design of basements in those districts that are designated as shallow groundwater areas. So those are a couple that we are looking at. We will have more, but we just wanted to kind of give you an overview so you know what's coming, what to expect. And as you get the full finalized language in the summer, just wanted to make you aware of what's being worked on. So what we'd like to do next is go through the maps. You saw some of these last month. We'd like to go through each and do a little bit of a compare and contrast with what's the existing in the ordinance and some of the changes proposed to the maps. What we have now, we, on the screen in front of you is our current sensitive lands district overlay. It's part of our zoning map and we, as discussed previously, we have issues where specifically in the parts of the city, the southern tip that was annexed after 2005, when this map was adopted. The map was never updated at the time, and so it's often confusing for people coming in if they want to build a house or do a subdivision. It's part of that, we want to clarify that, that we want to update this map to include not only the annexed lands, but also to feature updated boundaries to reflect the new data that we'll go over. So this is the proposed sensitive lands district. As you can see, I might toggle back and forth a little bit, but you can see that there's some significant changes here. The entire southern tip of the city has now been included. As we go through all of the maps for the hazard areas, you'll see that there are some, you know, for instance, around Mill Hollow Park here wasn't previously listed, but now that we have updated information on steep slopes, we've expanded some of these areas throughout the city so that they're all very clearly within our sensitive lands district. Just to go back and forth again, it's not, not too many major changes. But there are some, you know, along the East Jordan Canal. Sorry, you can see that that has been expanded a little bit.
And then, yeah. Can I ask you a quick question? It looks like the update, in addition to the Mill Hollow, it looks like the close to the public works and where the, the, yeah, right in there. Not just 30th, but it looks like, have we increased the stuff around the outside of that, around the retention pond at all? But that would be amazing and fantastic if we had. I'm at this scale, I can't tell for sure, but.
That area is currently in sensitive lands for shallow groundwater. And it's, it is in sensitive lands in the proposed, the Salt Lake County property that's has the pond in it.
That's great, Adam. Does that, does that continue up along 30th at all?
Yeah, it includes all of 30th on both sides up to, it looks like Hollow Mill Drive. And then it gets high enough that it's outside of the groundwater area. The Mill Hollow is, is in sensitive lands due to slope stability, due to a 30% slope from, that used to be a gravel pit where the park is. In the original overlay zone, it didn't have that. What's changed is the city or the, sorry, the state in 2015 acquired LiDAR data with Salt Lake County where they got the, the contours for the entire, for all of Salt Lake County. So any, any development near a 30% slope would require a slope stability study. So that's why those parcels are being added to the sensitive lands district.
That sounds great, Adam. Thank you for that clarification. I might add that along the, the both sides of 30th, even up above Mill Hollow Drive where it's retained on the west side and to a degree on the east side, there were, there are definitely some slope issues there and I know it's been retained, but if this is a factor that would allow us to either get grant money for remediation, the, the, the way that that's been handled thus far, it's just the brick, the masonry is just, it's, it's been on good, ongoing challenges related to slope remediation.
The retaining wall on 30th East.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, the, so one of the changes, as Andy mentioned, is that the entire city is going to be inside sensitive lands where geological hazards exist. The map kind of shows the known hazards, but there are smaller parcels that have 30% slopes that, that might be shown on this map or might not. So staff would evaluate that on each development. We look at every development to see if there's a, a significant geological hazard.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Right. That was one of the, the major items that we want to make sure gets clarified is that just because a property is not in this district, although this has now been expanded and is more accurate. Certainly if you're in this overlay, then one hazard or another is present and it will need to be addressed through any sort of building permit or other application. But that doesn't mean that, you know, somewhere else, you know, there are some properties in the middle of the city. You know, 23rd East is very steep and there are a lot of properties where it's steeper than 30% in the yard. And so if, if someone was to build on or near one of those, all of these requirements would still apply. And like Adam said, we just review those on a case-by-case basis. So getting back to the individual hazard, so the way our ordinance is laid out, we've got the kind of general overlay citywide, then we also have appendices for each hazard. And we went over some of these last month, but to show you some of the changes, as Adam said, the, the, what's on the books right now for slope stability is what you're seeing. We have a, just kind of a high, medium and low hazard designation. And as Adam mentioned, we've got now more specific data for analyzing slopes and designating areas of the city that are in that steep slope category. I don't know if there's anything you want to clarify about that.
Well, so what this shows is the LiDAR data that was collected in 2015 by the state. And it's identifying all the slopes that are greater than 30%. The sleds ordinance prevents development on slopes greater than 30%. And any slope that is building close to a slope like this would be required to do a slope stability study to determine whether the existing slope is stable. And also if it's stable during an earthquake. And then also calculate the required setback from the slope. So the original map showed these general areas that were low, medium and high, where really the high area is where the steep slope and the medium really didn't match up with what you see the LiDAR showing. So the LiDAR is much more specific of the location of the 30%. So the, so the recommendation will be to, to use a map that is actually showing the steep slopes in the city. Instead of having this map that's kind of low hazard, medium hazard, it's just going to be very simple and say, these are the steep slopes. And, you know, we have to, we have to deal with that. So, so that's the, the slope stability map.
So while, while we're looking at this one, one question I have is it's probably sort of like the southern part of the city with just the sensitive lands overlay is the gravel pit appears to be not, even though, you know, I know it's an unnatural slope at this point, but how do we handle that one? Is that why it's not in there? Because it's an operating gravel pit?
Well, I, I'm not sure why the gravel pit has, I'm not sure if the LiDAR has that or not. Mike, do you want to speak about the gravel pit and how that's going to?
Oh, I mean, other, the gravel plate has almost all of these hazards in it. I'm not, I think it is in the full overlay. So this side, that side would be investigated for all the hazards and it, you know, it has, it's got them all except groundwater issues. So we probably ought to just add it back into this map here, but those hazards are covered and they are assessed. They're assessed today and they'll continue to be.
Yeah, the biggest hazard in the gravel pit are the, are the faults and the slopes. I'm not sure why this LiDAR doesn't show that because I wonder if the other one does. The, but they have done geologic hazard studies in the gravel pit.
It's a good point. I, I think that's worth investigating. I, I don't know, because I know that this map is, I, I think the intention here is to capture the major, like large 30% slopes. As I mentioned previously, there are other areas that are, have small pockets of 30%. And those aren't necessarily all reflected on this. And I, you know, I wonder if.
One of the issue, the, with the LiDAR in the gravel pit was it, it's showing every slope that's 30% and there's a lot of dirt piles there. So maybe the, maybe our geologists had taken that out. And then just because the whole thing is getting evaluated for slope stability and fault rupture and rockfall as well. But yeah, there's definitely, I'm looking at the 30% map and it does show, you can see the roads that they have and, and all the piles of dirt, so.
I might not have the most up to date. We'll check that though. That's, that's a good point.
I think all we do is just add it in red here because it has a.
I'm sure we have a ton of unique situations like that, but that one kind of flares out at me after, anyway.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, it's absolutely insensitive ones.
Okay, so the next map is fault rupture hazard. This is the current map. As you can see, it's the old map. It doesn't show the annexed property. Based on new data, these are the, the new fault lines and fault hazard study areas. So the, the lines obviously in the red and then the darker color with the buffer from those lines is the new fault study area. And again, you know, Adam can maybe talk to some of the differences, but to maybe point out just briefly there. The, this kind of tip of the corner where the Javerni subdivision is, the newer data has the faults kind of running a little bit closer there than I think it, it's got a little bit of a bump out, oh, sorry. Above there, so a little bit more of a study area. So a couple more spots, a little bit further north.
So this data is coming from the UGS, the Utah Geological Survey. And in the last year or two, the state has issued new fault maps that show the updated locations of the Wasatch Fault. There is this area that the red lines are the known faults, whether they're well-defined or not. Everything here is shown in red and the study area is defined by the state as well. The study area is 250 feet if the fault is well-located on the up-thrown side. So that's the side that's above the fault. So 250 feet on the up-thrown side is part of the study area of a known fault. And if the fault is, if it's, the fault is not well-located, it can go all the way up to 1,000 feet. And that's why you see these bump out areas. And then on the lower side, on the down-thrown side, it is 500 feet. And so those areas are known as the fault, as the special service fault rupture area. So any property that falls within that area has to do a fault rupture study to clear, either clear the proposed structure of, of faults. The recommended setback from faults are about 20 feet. And you can't build directly on the fault line. So they have to do a geological study where they dig a trench to determine if there is a fault on their property. And so these standards all come from the UGS. And in 2020, based off of the LiDAR and based off of the new studies that have been collected over the years, the state updated the map. And essentially what we're doing is, is getting the newest information into the ordinance. And we're changing the ordinance. So as the UGS continues to update their data with, with more, as more and more reports are done, then the maps will, will update along with it. So the, the ordinance is basically going to reference the state guidelines of the UGS for, for the faults and also for, for landslides as well.
So I think we, so that, that, that is one of the major changes, I think, is the fault data. One of the major reasons for this update and one of the more significant updates is just changing from this older, more outdated map to the more current standards.
You know, this, this map shows a lot of existing property. I, you know, and I realize they don't come in unless they're changing or building something new, but how does this affect property owners who are, already have a, a building on these?
That's a very good question. So the, it's the, the way that it, the way that it is, is the, the city does not have in its ordinance, the, the existing structure on a remodel, as long as they're not significantly increasing occupancy or additional space, then they can, they can make changes to the property. But when they start to add habitable space, that's when it triggers the ordinance. So if you're adding an extra level to your house, it triggers the ordinance. If you're just painting the walls and, and fixing up the house, it doesn't trigger the ordinance. And, and what we've run into with some of these additions is they have to clear the addition to make sure that the, to make sure that there's no fault on the addition. I, we haven't run into one where the, the fault is running through the property, but I imagine there are some hazards, because when a lot of these structures were built, there, the, the standards were much different than they are today.
Thank you.
Right. It's a, it's a point of frustration sometimes for property owners who may not have been previously aware that they live on or near a fault, but right, as Adam said, if, if they're doing anything significant, like an addition or new construction, then they do have to go through this entire process of digging trenches and verifying that where the fault is. Next, we have debris flow. Adam could probably talk to this a little bit more, but we've got just again, kind of a high, medium or low hazard area. We're updating with new data, which doesn't delineate from the, the different levels of hazard, just as I, I think what's generally that was previously noted as kind of the higher risk area as the areas that require debris flow hazard studies.
Yeah, the debris flow map hasn't changed too much. What a debris flow is, is essentially it's a, an alluvial fan that dates back to the Holocene era, which is the last, which is about 11,000 years ago. So the state defines a debris flow as an alluvial fan in, from the Holocene. So you can see each one of the drainages coming out of the canyon has the potential for a debris flow in the alluvial fan. All we're doing here is again, eliminating the areas that wouldn't require the study. So if you go back to the old map, there were low, medium and high. And we did not require debris flow studies, I shouldn't say we, or the city did not require debris flow studies in the low area. And it's the high area that's the concern. So that's, we're really just clarifying that and making the map simpler. And I believe it has changed a little bit based off of, of LiDAR again.
Right. There are a few, I think I noted this one at the corner of the map, it looks like is, is no longer.
Yeah. And the way, some of them might disappear because if the drainage is no longer, if the drainage has been cut off by a storm drain or a road, then the alluvial fan doesn't have the same hazard as one that has an active, I mean, the drainage is still there, but if there's been a structure built that eliminates the possibility of a debris flow, then that's probably why it was removed. But we'll look into the. Um but we'll look into the that one.
So for those who, like me, weren't familiar with this before. Excuse me, the, the way Adam explained it to me, debris flows are are generally the hazard is if there was a forest fire or something, a wildfire. Um uh along any one of these hazard areas. And then after everything is burnt down, a large storm comes. All of that debris from the fire can then flow downhill with the storm. And that can cause damage to property, so that that's what this hazard area is intended to verify. We have a couple others and I'll I'll be quick since we're we're getting close on time, but liquefaction um. Is earthquake liquefaction is a risk that I I don't think the data has changed. We have one uh high risk area, just a very tip, the northern end of the city along thirteenth. That has been designated, that hasn't changed in the data.
Yeah, the liquefaction is based off of the the shallow groundwater. Um and that data comes from, uh I believe the state database. Uh so that hasn't changed, uh we, the green is not a hazard, so we're really just. Uh clarifying the high and the medium. Um which is shown, which pretty much mimics the shallow groundwater. And the shallow groundwater is uh groundwater that's ten feet or less from the surface. And I believe that might be the last map, although we.
We have that here, yes.
Yeah, so this is the ground, the shallow groundwater map. The light blue is thirty feet, so there's groundwater within thirty feet. And the dark blue is groundwater within ten feet. Um and the shallow groundwater is the ten foot zone, so we're we're just kind of cleaning up the map on that one.
So I don't think that that has changed and then uh. And then rock fall as well was the other one that we. I I think if you look at the boundaries of the high rock fall risk. Um I I believe that the layers are the same, so it's just. A matter of extending it to match the current city boundaries.
The rock falls based off of the the outcrops on the hillside, the granite boulders. Um they haven't moved much in the last ten years, so.
Great.
The rock fall is pretty much not gonna change.
So we have um, w- we're looking forward to and we've been working on. Specifically this week is the thirty percent slope ordinance. We don't have the final language nailed down just yet. And so we, we won't get into it too much, but um we do want want to just. Again, get you thinking about these steep slopes, and I thought it might be good to show. A few examples of hillsides throughout the city that you might be familiar with. So here's an image of uh hillside along Hollow Mill Drive near the Mill Hollow Park. And that's, we measured it out uh using just Google Earth and it's about forty percent. So when you hear us talking about steep slopes, this is typically what what we're thinking of. The hillside uh behind Target and the Target parking lot between. Um Target and that the property that we'll be discussing today for the swim school. That's also in that range, steeper than thirty percent. Thirty-five to forty percent. And then this is the prospector property that um. Some on the commission are probably familiar with, we had a rezone application, I think a couple years ago. And uh you know, there's a flat portion that um is under thirty percent. Took along the street front edge, but the hillside in the back, it's over thirty, thirty to forty percent. So um we'll be working on that um throughout the month and hope to come back with more updates about slope ordinance. But um just wanna give you some some. Something to think about so that you, as you're driving around the city, thinking about. What the regulations should be for these slopes. There throughout the city, like I said, there are, you know, sections along twenty-three hundred east, just down from City Hall. A lot of the neighborhoods were built on a slope and have. Terrorist yards and and in some cases, steep areas between properties. So really does affect, you know, the the steep slopes is. Probably the hazard that we deal with the most as staff when it comes to building permits, subdivisions. Uh that sort of thing. So we'll be working on that as well as some additional. Clarifying and cleaning up items for the rest of the ordinance. But again, we just, we wanted to check in, let you know uh where we were at and show some of the changes to the text and the maps. Does anyone have any questions about what we've gone over so far?
I have one, I and and this is not really what you've done so far, although um my comment to that is all these hazards are the. Part of the things that make it so beautiful to live in this area. Um but my question is, what about um like a man-made hazard? We've had mining in this area. Uh we've got a, we've got something on our business agenda that has a, you know, is a former EPA cleanup site, so. Are we considering identifying those known situations where there may be um. An environmental impact from just from man-made issues?
I I can speak a little bit to what we're considering and probably something that we'll want your feedback on. But there are, so comparing our ordinance to other cities, there are. Some cities that do differentiate between natural and man-made slopes. And um the one that we were just looking at recently was Saratoga Spring City. Which has an exception in their code that says. You can develop a man-made slope that's over thirty percent if you have the correct. Hazard reports and if you're showing clearly that. You're not only mitigating the hazard, but improving the stability of the slope that was previously disturbed. And so we, we want to um. Look at options that are along those lines, we really wanna be careful about. Being very clear about what counts as man-made slopes. But um if something that we, I think are looking into and would probably want to include on an update.
What about environmental issues, you know, like mining slag or a gas station or, you know, things where there could be cont- contamination that we know about?
So the, so there is part of this ordinance that's being put into uh chapter seventeen. Is called source protection, where if there is a well. Or a a drinking water source, there's a source protection plan that has to go to the state. And within certain zones of the source protection, there are restrictions for gas stations, chemicals. Um so that's a state regulation for that's related to drinking water. And the city, it does enforce that in this ordinance, we do have, there's two source protection zones, there's. The source protection zone for for wells, for shallow groundwater, and then another one for the watershed as well. Only a few properties are affected by uh the watershed zone. And that's what Andy was saying, that those are gonna be moved to uh this, the. Chapter seventeen, cuz they're not necessarily geological hazards, but they are something that are that we have in our ordinance. Um and then the the last one that you said, the the cleanup, the EPA is, I believe that's the health department. Um that that has the jurisdiction on that, is that right, Andy?
I think so, yeah, that that was my thoughts on your question or that, we we've had that happen recently with. As you mentioned in the packet, um the Granite Oaks subdivisions formerly an EPA superfund site that's been cleaned up and. Um one of the adjacent properties over there was doing a project with a pool. And ran into some issues where they needed specific health department approval and had to go through some extra steps, and so we're. We're trying to be careful to include those maps where appropriate, I think. As Adam said, we'll probably include that in our updates to that chapter seventeen.
Okay, that's good to hear, because, yeah, I know, I've I've been involved with projects on other EPA sites and they're um. They can be very stringent on, you know, just e- even the dirt that you touch. Um and how far you can go into the dirt and it's pretty impactful, and if we're. If we have things that we're aware of, it feels like we should. Mark that so people have, you know, an opportunity to realize, oh, you know, this, this could mean. A lot of different things if I choose to develop on this particular piece of ground.
I'll make a note to uh to double check on that, though, before we do our final review and send out the language. To make sure we have that.
And and kudos to you guys for these updates, it's really nice to see these um. You know, with the new information that's available and having incorporated and seeing it. On sensitive lands maps, it's it's really good to see, little scary, cuz I live in a zone that has almost all of it.
We had an engineer say that if you live above the fault, you're actually safer. I don't know how true that is, so maybe Adam can speak to that, but.
I might have to have Adam come over and tell me.
Great, a- any other uh questions about the sensitive lands update?
They're being quiet, Andy.
Well, good, we, you know, we're just uh wanna keep you informed, let you know uh what we're working on. Hope to have more substantial updates for you throughout the summer, so. Uh keep an eye out for that before our next meeting.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, Adam, it's really, really helpful to have your your voice here.
You're welcome.
Great, well, if it's okay with you, we can probably move on to our other agenda items.
Sounds good.
Great, I think Sam's got the the first one, is that right?
Yeah, if it's um time for me to go, I'm happy to share my screen and kind of walk through that.
I'm ready for you, Sam.
Perfect, okay, so I'm gonna run us through the conditional use on our agenda tonight. This is CUP twenty-one zero zero nine for Big Blue Swim School. So here we have our project summary, this is in the um kind of Park Center Development Area, so thirteen seventy-eight East Park Center Drive. Um I'll show a street view and just a few slides to help kind of orient you. And the applicant has requested conditional use approval for a swim school in this building. Or rather, a portion of this building, uh the business is called Big Blue Swim School. And I believe the applicant is either already in this session or planning to join in the next and can clarify any questions that that do come up. So the proposal is for a swim school that specializes in swim lessons for children between ages six months, all the way up to twelve years old. They are proposing to um operate this business within a vacant portion of the Zurcher's Party Store Building, so. Uh Zurcher's occupies most of that commercial space, but the western portion is vacant and has been for many years. And so this is, as we see in that Aqua highlight, the the kind of the area of focus for this project. And as far as the business model, they anticipate being open throughout the afternoon and evening on weekdays. And then from morning to early afternoon on weekends with typical instruction capacity for up to thirty kids at a time. And they have kind of a a variety of different lessons for um abilities and age groups uh going on concurrently. This just gives a little bit of site history, some of the commissioners may remember when Circuit City was at this location that closed in twenty-ten. And then we've had Zurcher's operating pretty much ever since that point, but just occupying again that western. Uh or sorry, eastern portion, leaving the the western area vacant. Looking at our ordinance review here, a commercial recreation building is considered a conditional use. In the regional commercial or CR zone, so that's why it's it's here before you tonight. Um as far as parking goes, there's an existing parking lot to the north of the building. Parking standards require about fifty stalls for this type of swim school recreation use. Uh the parking lot for the building includes about two hundred stalls, which is sufficient for that fifty. For the swim school and for what is required for researchers. Um staff will verify that a parking agreement is in place. Um but we do have a consent form from the property owner for this this application and there. There is a good deal of parking kind of right in front of the building there. As far as building modifications go, the applicant is um somewhat obviously going to be making some changes to the building to accommodate. Um this new use if it is approved, so they're proposing a new exterior. Uh with some signage and and some storefront improvements on that western portion of the building. And then also doing a pretty substantial kind of tenant improvement or interior modification to uh construct swimming pools. Waiting rooms, locker rooms, um all of those different areas necessary for the business. These projects will all require a commercial building permit, which will go through. Our building department and our planning and zoning department for code compliance. Um and I wanna note that this also includes any outdoor lighting that's going to be incorporated as part of this new project, the. The existing lighting, uh exterior lighting that's there as part of the project, as you guys are familiar with, doesn't. Can't really be changed to comply with our outdoor lighting ordinance, but new lighting can be and. Not something staff will be looking at during the building permit process. No public comments have been received for this application, um it is on. Tonight's agenda for a public hearing, so when we get to the business session, um it's possible some folks will will have comments to add. And then staff is recommending approval of this project, um and we haven't recommended any certain conditions, but as it is a conditional use, if. There are items the commission feels would uh be important, certainly look at adding those to a motion of approval. Any questions on this one from the commission?
I seem to be the only one jumping in tonight.
That's just fine, I'm just glad somebody is responding to me.
We're listening, we're definitely listening. At least I am, I don't know, it's hard to tell on Zoom, but I thi- I think we are. Um my question on this one was, and I'm sure this is part of the permitting process, but uh you know, obviously a pool facility of of this scale. Is gonna have a pretty good chemical storage, I presume this is being handled at the permitting phase and that that be- because they have, you know, a tenant wall in between and.
That's correct, yep, during the building permit process, our building department will be looking at all the standards for any storage of like hazardous. Um or chemical materials, and then I also um would imagine that during the business licensure. Licenseur process, the health department would be looking at the site as well to ver- verify safe uh protocols and operations.
Well, and the other thing that brought up to me was the venting, uh you know, it would probably have heavier venting than, you know, like a retail. Application, oh um. And knowing that this sits down basically in a gully below residences, um that. Whatever kind of venting happens on the roof would be quite visible uh from above.
Sure. Yeah, certainly, um some good things to keep in mind, we'll work with our building department on, you know, full code compliance for those standards. As far as the roof appurtenances go, the applicant did mention there will be some systems added to the roof, um so it may be appropriate to. Just consult them in the business meeting on um kind of all that that entails. Um but we will certainly be um, you know, rigorous in our review process on this building permit.
Thanks, Sam.
Sam, I I'm uh, I love the presentation, that's great, I I would add to Chris's concerns about the. Uh with an indoor pool, we do have some great uh intel in the form of the. The Cotton Heights Rec Center in terms of how a pool in our climate, this elevation does. And whether or not that that pool is kept clean with chlorine or bromine or saline. Um and the the chemical storage issues, the the ventilation issues, the humidity issues. We have a whole body of, you know, forty plus years of information and what worked and what didn't work. That's already available, and I know this is an experienced national chain, but I do think that understanding kind of what has been done in our community. Uh just connecting the right people to the right people might answer a lot of questions and make their process a little bit more smooth. Um I don't think that, you know. I don't think that, you know, anything that's been done at the rec center has been done honestly, but I know that there are times when. They went down one road and then had to shift gears, especially that ventilation issue. That's a, that's a really big challenge here and a much heavier lift. And if you're going to have people just based on the layout. It looks like there's a, a big, large, open area where the people are waiting as their, you know, parents are watching and. Those little, those sink areas where chlorine can, can sit, if that's what it is, or bromine, or whatever it is, that, that's a, that's been a challenge. And I, and I don't want to be alarmist, but there probably, probably thirty plus years ago, there, there were some deaths related to. Chlorine for, in a pool situation. And I think a lot of lessons have been learned locally. I think most of that could be mitigated by just making sure that it's to. The, the local standard and base out on our local experience. I don't, I don't think that will require anything to be overbuilt. And then the, the second one, I would say, I, I really appreciate you addressing the, the lighting that was, and the signage. That was my big question was. Making sure with all the trouble we've gone to, to make sure that our lighting ordinance and our signage ordinance is going to be observed in that very, very. Highly lit area will be observed. I, I, I appreciate the fact you address that. So thank you.
Yeah, we'll get, um, much more detailed specifications on the build and the signage and the lighting as it approaches building permit, if it is approved. And be sure to look through that rigorously. And I can also connect the applicant with Ben Hill at the rec center if, if they have an interest in just discussing. Kind of some lessons learned from that perspective, but. We'll, we'll be sure to vet it through all the right channels during the, the permitting process. That's, that's a good thing to keep in mind.
Hey, Sam, one question I have is that we're talking about classes that started a cer- all started a certain time and that kind of thing. And little kids and parents wanting to drop off in a very busy parking lot.
Sure.
I've seen everything concerned I have is about parking, seems like lately. But anyway. Is there going to be any kind of signage or something that's going to say, don't stop here? So, because that's busy. People are coming from Home Depot and. And Zurchers too. I just would hate to see people just stopping right there to drop off their kids and blocking traffic or kids running through cars. So.
Sure.
Um, just if some kind of signage could be put up or I, I mean, I don't know what we, how we. Address that, but.
No site signage has been proposed as part of the project. I, I think that's something the commission could explore if this is a concern that, that you guys have. The city does have an anti-idling ordinance and that, you know, tries to mitigate any sort of idling activity. And but we do anticipate that there, there are more than enough parking stalls to serve both businesses. So we do hope that that would encourage folks to. Park their vehicles, you know, and then walk in and, and use the kind of waiting area to, to pick up their children. But again, this is on for a conditional use. If, if there are conditions you feel would be important for. The general welfare of the community, that's something commission can explore.
What does a, I mean, do, do others have a concern with that? If it's just me, that's fine. I, I just have years of dropping off at Dance Studio.
Yeah. It can be chaotic for sure. And those are good.
Parents don't want to walk in their five-year-old. They want to just drop them off. So I mean, it's, it's just, or their twelve-year-old, maybe their five-year-old, they.
They have infant swimming classes. But i- is the concern that. You, you want to prevent the collision between pedestrians walking and people dropping off?
Yeah, yeah. The, the people are going to stop right here in front where the entrance is. There's not really, they're going to stop, drop off their kids. And, um, and it could be really fast, but it might not be. And I just, and also don't want kids running through the cars. Getting dropped off. That's mine.
Yeah, those are important things to consider.
So just food for thought.
Any other questions from the commission at this point? We will obviously be going through the same thing again in our business session. And but I'm happy to answer any other, any other thoughts or questions before I pass it back to Andy.
I don't see anymore right now, Sam.
I'll stop sharing and then I think Andy's going to queue up some overviews of the other projects.
Great. Thank you. So we got two more items. We've got that extra half hour. So. Try to make sure we get through everything. Next up on the agenda is a rezone at seventy-four thirty-two South twenty-three hundred East. Give you a brief overview. Here's a zoomed out context map. So the, the subject property in red here. On twenty-three hundred East, just a little bit north of City Hall, just down the hill from us here. The request is to rezone from us, our one-eight single-family residential zone to our two-eight multifamily zone. It's a little bit of a more zoomed in view. And then some, some maps to show current and proposed zonings are one-eight to R two-eight. And we're also amending the land use map to, to match that. And I've got some, some background that will help explain a little bit of the history behind this request. So. For starters, the current parcel is one larger parcel. It's one point seven two acres. This is currently all one piece here highlighted in the, the Aqua color. There's a single-family home along Butler Hills Drive. And then an accessory garage, the greenhouse on it. The, the parcel right now that we're looking at is this piece along twenty-three hundred East. There's currently a. Like, like an orchard. You've probably seen if you drive up and down twenty-three hundred Easts. It's a really nice looking piece. But to give some of the history. I've got that nineteen ninety-eight parcel map here with some highlights. So originally. This piece was multiple parcels. There's just, you know, pieces of four. Previous parcels have been consolidated. And those, this is not part of an official subdivision. It never went through any law consolidation process. We couldn't find any official formal approval, but just over the years, the pieces have been added on to create the current larger lot. Just highlighted in red so that you know what we're looking at. And then the, the piece that we're looking at tonight outlined as well. So over the years, those were all consolidated unofficially through deed. And then what we've got now is the request to now re-separate that lot along twenty-three hundred East. So we do have an application for a minor subdivision for this lot, creating a new. One or zero point one nine six acre lot with frontage along twenty-three hundred East. It's under staff review right now. I think we're planning to have the final review complete this week, but. It has received zoning approval. It's the right size and width for the zone. And, and so just again, to, to kind of explain that. This has not been recorded yet. Once it does have final approval, the new parcel will need to be recorded in Salt Lake County. We're not planning to take the rezone to the city council for final approval until we've verified that that has happened. So there won't be. Any mix-up or creating a new zone for a parcel that hasn't been finalized yet. A little bit more history. So as, as part of that, with all of these lots that previously were separate lots, as you can see, we've got a, a map from two thousand and four. Showing our two-eight zoning up and down this side of twenty-three hundred East. Then at two thousand and five, this is kind of pixelated. Apologize, but we have an old, old scan of the original city zoning map. That also had that original parcel in the R two-eight zone. So. The original land use and zoning maps for the cities envisioned this piece as. An R two-eight zone, which would allow for a two-family house. But what happened was as these lots were consolidated without going through any formal process, receiving the formal. Approval of the city, the zoning and land use attributes that would have been saved with that parcel in our database. Were consolidated with the larger piece. And so got the R one-eight zoning. And that's why it's currently a single-family piece. And designated on a land use map for low-density residential. But as we look through the history, looks like that original parcel was supposed to be an R two-eight zone. And so based on that, staff is recommending approval. The allowed uses in the R two-eight zone. Include single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings as permitted uses. And then a, a list of conditional uses. That include things like churches, parks. Some additional water pump, wireless towers, things like that. The applicant has indicated that his plans are to build a two-family dwelling on the piece if approved. We've had some public comments. The ones that were received by noon yesterday were forwarded to you. We did actually get two more email public comments after noon that they came through last night. We'll be forwarding those on as per our procedures. But those two new ones were in favor of the request. So just wanted to bring that to your attention that we've got a few more in favor. For some context, these are the properties on either side. They are in the R two-eight zones on this for duplex use. And, and yes, so because it's a rezone and a land use map amendment. We've got two model motions. We are recommending approval. So what you'll be moving tonight is a recommendation of approval to the city council. And they will have the final vote, but because we're changing back the land use map. And the zone map, we've got separate motions that we'd like to have you make for, for both portions. That's all I have for this one. Any questions? Come back probably to one of these maps. Great. Okay.
Anything, Andy? Thank you.
Alrighty. And then we've got one more on the agenda besides your minutes. I'll just dive right into that as well. Granite Oaks third amended subdivision. This one is in, most of you are probably familiar with where Granite Oaks is, but for those who aren't, maybe listening in. Granite Oak subdivision is a single-family residential subdivision. Just off North Little Cottonwood Road. So we're Wasatch Forks, it becomes Wasatch and North Little Cottonwood on the way up to. Little Cottonwood Canyon. There's a subdivision there. And what we're looking at is one of the large lots on that subdivision. To be amended to create six new lots. Here's a more zoomed in view. The current piece is ten point eight six acres currently undeveloped. And this is what's being proposed. So I've, I've kind of outlined the property lines in a thicker black so that it's easier to see. What's being proposed is six lots, five along this frontage. I think it's Granite Trail Lane. And then one larger flag lot behind. So for six total lots, a little bit of history on this piece. It was originally, the Granite Oak subdivision was originally recorded in May of two thousand and six. Thirty-six total lots. Within the piece that we're looking at today, there was an approval at one point for eight lots. With a, a little bit of a different layout with a circle. Granite Trail Circle coming down from, from what's there now. As if I go back, you can see it's just a little bump out. The original plan was a longer circle with more lots, giving eight lots. But several months later, December two thousand and six, those were all consolidated in a amended plat. So because that happened, went through this consolidation process, it's formally approved and recorded. Any new amendment to this has to meet all of our new requirements, including a lot of that sensitive land stuff that we discussed earlier. And you also mentioned this, this was part of a superfund site. There was a smelter. And I think in the report, it said it was in the, the southern tip near the creek. About a hundred and fifty years ago, eighteen seventies, there was a smelter there. It was agricultural open space for that, you know, hundred, hundred and fifty years. After the smelter had ended operation. And there was an EPA cleanup in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. So part of our sensitive lands reviews included some. We've got the literature from the applicant about that cleanup and are analyzing that as part of our sensitive lands ordinance review.
Andy, if I can jump in quick.
Yes.
The original subdivision and consolidation and cleanup. The Common Heights was a city at the time, but this area was not in the city. This annexed in later. So all of the original entitlement work was done under. Salt Lake County jurisdiction and what would have been their version of F cause, you know, their sensitive lands ordinance at the time. So. That, that all preceded this being a city project.
Right, yes. Thank you, Mike. So it was all approved previously under different rules. And so what we're looking at now is. Anything new that comes through, including this application tonight, has to meet our current standards. We've reviewed it for compliance with the zoning. It's well above the minimum lot sizes for the zone. It's an R one fifteen zone. Also meets lot widths. It's got the setbacks labeled. So all of the basic zoning ordinance requirements are met. There are a couple of other things. So open space requirements for subdivisions over five acres. In this case, this is over ten. So it needs to have that ten percent open space. They're providing eleven percent of the highlighted that area in green. They're proposing to preserve space along the base of the creek for their open space. And then, as mentioned, the sensitive lands requirements, what's especially relevant for the planning commission is that. Yeah, the required geologic hazard reports shall be submitted to the city for review prior to your consideration. And so it's been submitted and has gone through several reviews, just to give you a little bit of a sense of. The history on the sensitive lands reviews. They had a scoping letter preliminary meetings back in October twenty twenty. In fact, we've had previous. Meetings related to this project going back years, but for this particular application. Starting in October twenty twenty, we had the first scoping letter. First study was submitted December twenty twenty. And then a revision in February and another one in May, just more, a little bit more recently. So that last revision is currently under review. We did discuss this with our geology. Our consultant GeoStrata. While they're finalizing final technical approval. He did say that we're not anticipating any major corrections that would alter the design of the site overall. If there is any correction required that would alter the layout of the site, it'll have to come back to planning commission. A couple of those items, particular note slope stability. So this is one of those that has some steep slopes. Specifically along the creek, there's some very steep parts. And so we wanted to make sure that that was very clearly labeled on the plat. So I've highlighted what they have labeled and designated as thirty percent non-buildable areas on the plat. There's also a landslide area on this subdivision. Highlighted in this, this kind of orange color. I just called out where they've got the extent of the landslide. This is interesting because this is not something that we see commonly throughout the city, but. This is interesting because this is not something that we see commonly throughout the city, but there's a moderate risk for landslide on these lots above three ninety-one and three ninety-two. And then a high risk if there anything was built within this landslide extent. And so that's been called out on the plat as a non-buildable area as well with some setbacks. I think they're twenty-five. I think maybe setbacks. That was part of the recommendation of the hazard study. And then they also have additional engineering requirements as well. Structural engineer shall design the home's foundations to tolerate five centimeters of lateral ground deformation resulting from a design level earthquake. So some some beefed up engineering standards for the foundations of any home going up above here. We did have some public comments. Kind of a mixture. Those have all been sent to you. They were all sent yesterday for review. And and we're recommending approval. Like I said, if any major changes come after tonight, if this is approved, it'll come back for your attention and review. But otherwise, it it does still need to go through finalizing of the technical approvals for their construction plans as well as the final geologic hazard study approval. So we've added that as conditions to make sure that those are taken care of. That's all I have for that one. Any questions on Granite Oaks?
Pretty quiet out here tonight, Andy. I think we know we're about to pick it up again too, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, great. We do have, so when the time comes in the public meeting, we have asked Adam to stick around. So it, you know, if we have questions about more technical stuff or engineering related, he is a good resource. But yep, that.
Yeah, these are pretty impacted. So that will be incredibly helpful. Thank you for making that available. With that, I would entertain a motion, commissioners. This would be a motion to close the work meeting. Give us ten minutes to go to the bathroom and grab something to eat before we start our business meeting.
We adjourn.
Oh, we have a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Wild.
Second.
Second, all in favor. Okay, thank you, everyone. This closes our work session and we'll see you in about ten minutes in our business meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.